The train's leaving the station.
I'd like to call the order, the City of Sagatuck Workshop for June twenty first, twenty twenty three. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Gardner.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Stanton.
Yeah. Thank you. And yes, I do have, I was contacted by both Holly and Lauren. They both have commitments, one of which is a sixteenth birthday and driver's license test. So we're all looking forward to Lauren getting her license. So could I have a motion to excuse Council members Stanton and Leo?
Mr. Mayor, motion to excuse Councilmember Stanton and Leo.
Second.
Motion Baldwin, second Louis. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. I do not believe we have a guest speaker today. If I missed anyone, step forward. We have some of you that are here, we have you on the agenda. So without, without that, oh, I'm sorry, I should have gone to agenda changes. I don't believe we have any agenda changes, but I will. Oh, Russ, do you have something?
Mr. Mayor, I have two items I'd like to have the council put on the workshop agenda today for very brief discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
One is city council slash committee meeting legal coverage policy.
Yes.
Number two is a code of ethics study committee.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Would you like to make that, make a motion to add those two things to the agenda?
Yes, I make a motion to add the two following items.
Okay.
City council slash committee meeting legal coverage policy and code of ethics study committee.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion Gardner, second. Muncie. Jamie, would this be a voice or a roll call for additions to the agenda?
We usually do voice.
Voice, okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
No. What do we have?
That's three, three to two.
Three, two.
Three, two. Okay, Helen, will you know?
What's that?
Will you know?
I was a yes.
You were a yes. So it's three, three, two, yes.
Three, two, yes.
Three, two, yes. Very good. We will add that to the agenda. In future, I would like that to come before the city manager and myself, so we can actually put it on the written agenda, so people are prepared for the discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we probably should have had discussion about that before we voted. Because as per our city charter and the rules of the city council, generally, the mayor and the manager agree on the workshop agenda. And it is not developed on the fly. That helps people be organized and prepared for discussion. Nothing's ever added on the fly.
Mr. Mayor, I will say the reason that I voted yes was simply just as an opportunity to have anybody say anything. I, if it comes up in council comments, if it comes up as a discussion item, but yes, I learned about this on the fly and could have easily gone the other way on a no too. So I don't understand the necessary for it to come up as an agenda change versus council comments, if that would be better explained.
Well, we did vote on it and, and, you know, the point is well taken, Councilmember Lewis. The point is well taken, but we have voted and we will add those two items to the agenda.
Mayor, also, it was a surprise to me as well. And, and, and I also voted yes, because I'm always willing to talk about anything on anyone's mind on our council. So I would support any, any kind of, from anyone, so.
So we will add legal counsel to K, to J, and to K, we will add ethics policy. So those will be the two additions to the agenda. Going back to four, we have no guest speaker to my knowledge. So that will take us to public comments. Let's leave public comment to agenda items only at this point. Is there anyone in the room that would like to offer public comment?
I'm David Swan, three, four, five Griffith, and I'm here representing Sagatuck Dunes Coastal. Thank you for, and is it appropriate for me to speak? It is an agenda item.
Uh, yeah, and we were planning on calling on you during the discussion, but feel free. If you'd like to kick things off, go for it. Yeah.
Sure. Thank you for discussing today how the city can best provide public comment to Eagle regarding the proposed marina at the Kellum Sioux River Mouth. As you likely know, Eagle is the state agency which will make the decision to issue a permit to North Shore or deny the permit, allowing or denying the construction of the proposed marina. Eagle will make their decision using the following two statutes, part three oh one inland lakes and streams, which was designed to ensure navigational safety and also to protect the public trust. Part three fifty-three, critical dunes, which was designed to ensure the protection of critical dunes. So we identified four reasons why the city's voice is important. First, at the adjacent Riparian property owner manager with sixteen thousand front feet, let that sink in, sixteen thousand front feet on the river, what happens at the river mouth impacts the city's most valuable assets, as Councilmember Gardner said during the discussion last fall, when you all unanimously passed a resolution to Army Corps of Engineers, and I quote, "The river mouth is our community's front porch." Thank you for that. That's a great sign. Secondly, Eagle has formally requested comment from the city. Three, there are a number of public policy documents, including the tri-community master plan that directly address the criterion rather than questions that must be answered in statute three oh one, such as, what are the effects upon right wing? Aesthetics, local government, commerce, natural resources, and navigation of safety. All of those are addressed in the tri-community master plan. Four, there are also many public policy documents, including, as I just said, the tri-community master plan, that directly addresses the criterion in statute three fifty-three, such as, quote, "Will the proposed project significantly damage the public interest on a private land plan by significant and unreasonable depletion or degradation of any of the following? One, the diversity of critical dunes. Two, the quality of the critical dunes, or three, the functions of the critical dunes." So the public policy documents that we're referencing are, of course, the tri-community master plan that mentions dunes thirty-five times. It also mentions Singapore ten times, Sagatuck Dunes State Park Master Plan, all three additions that go back to nineteen eighty-two.
David.
Is that mine?
Okay.
Okay, I'll send this to all of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to make public comment? Anyone on the Zoom call who wishes to make public comment? I don't see any hands raised. All right, that will close our first public comment period. There will be another one after we go through item six, our discussion items. David, I hope you didn't get too comfortable. Our next item is six A coastal alliance request Eagle resolution, and that is on, it is possibly on page two of our, of our packets. I believe it's just a filing that was sent to, sent to a number of people or a letter. Should we give this over to Mr. Patterson, or you want to tee it up, or should we hear from Mr. Swan again?
Let Mr., I would recommend Mr. Swan coming up one more time, and then we can kick it off to Mr. Patterson.
Okay.
And I'll leave after Mr. Swan finishes his comments.
Thank you.
Sorry for the awkwardness of it, David, but we try to, you know, do it by the, by the book. Yeah.
And I always forget, I'm sorry, that it's three minutes.
No worries.
Even though representing a group.
It's all good.
So, um, I was talking about the public policy documents that support, that address three fifty-three critical dunes. And those are the tri-community master plan, Sagatuck Dunes State Park, all three additions, letters from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Patty Burkholtz, when she was state senator, Lana Pollock, when she was chair of the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund that granted eleven million dollars for the acquisition of Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area. Those letters went to the National Trust for Historic Preservation in support of Sagatuck Dunes being added to their annual list of America's eleven most endangered places. I could go on with a number of other public policy documents. The proposed marina is projected to create unsafe navigational conditions, permanently erase six point five acres of rare critical dunes, significantly alter the groundwater underneath the globally imperiled inner duna wetlands, eradicate spiritual sites on the Potawatomi traditional cultural property, and threaten lake sturgeon, permanently damage the historic site of Singapore. These cumulative detrimental impacts will have a profound impact upon what we are as a community and the tourist-based economy we have built over a hundred and forty years. Coastal Alliance, just as we did last fall, will offer to help city staff, as well as the legal counsel, to ensure the city's comments address legitimate three oh one and three fifty-three concerns as outlined in the many public policy documents. So thank you for putting this on here. Discussion.
Thank you. City manager, a few words before we turn it over to legal counsel.
Yeah, so the coastal alliance is requesting another resolution, similar to the one that you provided before, which the coastal alliance seemed very, very pleased with. I think there were sixty-four, sixty-five different points, sixty-five different points that were made. It was a pretty spendy resolution to create.
Yes.
So to the extent possible that we can use the majority of that document to submit to Eagle, I think that would be best. But since we're, you know, supplying that to, or providing that to a different organization, I think we have to be careful about how we present that. And this is the point that I'll turn it over to Mr. Patterson.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you. So what we, we did previously, for those who are new, draft a resolution, and it was related to response to a public hearing notice for the Army Corps. There were a set of standards that were a little bit different. Part of the larger piece of the resolution that we focused on included not only the master plan, but we were looking at historic preservation of the area, as I understand it now. Really, the three applicable areas, part thirty-one, part three oh one, and part three fifty-three would have a slightly different standard. So to the extent that council would pick this up, we would want to revise the resolution to speak to those legal requirements. And then I think in addition, there's probably, and this can be clarified by the coastal alliance, but part of the improvements include a request related to sheet piling, and really, our larger focus from the city council was a focus on the environmental aspect. Any potential navigational concerns related to traffic in and out because of the comments, again, that was made by Councilmember Gardner. I know that that was kind of implicated in our resolution as well. But I do think a lot of the, I mean, fortunately for, you know, the colleague and I that wrote that, a lot of the supporting materials that I know the coastal alliance has referenced here this afternoon, we did review those. Those were all a part of documents that were shared, you know, that time that we spent even meeting, getting the documents, all that's been done. So I do think a lot of the work can be used from the resolution we have. We just have to appreciate that we're filing it with a different agency, with a different set of standards, so it would want to be retooled and applied to them. And I do then think, again, as I think I cautioned before, you know, the one thing that we would want to focus on is those issues that relate to the interest of the city. We're not trying to get engaged in sort of an extraterritorial conversation that's outside those focuses that impact the city. So one of the key things that we did spend a lot of time on in the prior resolution was really focusing on those impacts for the city of Sagatuck, and that's why we sort of commented on safety, economic impacts to the downtown, tourism impacts to the downtown. And then, of course, you do own a sufficient and manage an extremely significant amount of, of land adjacent there too. And I think the historic preservation piece was a part of that. So we'd be happy to pick it up. I don't think it's going to be as spendy as it was before. I actually think it'd be much less because of the logistics we already accomplished in the prior resolution. And I do think, as I commented before, that, you know, we still would be comfortable with the city if city council wants to take a policy position on it, to be able to take that position. And I think I said this before, you know, I don't know, I don't think your resolution has any legal effect. It's your, it's this council's position as to those policy interests and community interests that would be reported in the resolution. So I don't know what the timeline is. I know that the notice is, is publicly available for twenty days. Previously, we filed the comments of city council a year and a half, maybe it's even two years after the notice had been effectuated. So logistically speaking, last time, we got direction from the council at a work session to prepare that resolution. And then we, within fourteen days, brought it back to council to review and approve that it's consistent with this body's position on the topic. So I would assume something similar could be accomplished here.
Thank you. Any questions for, maybe we should start with any questions for Mr. Swan, any questions for Mr. Swan on what they're asking for? Everyone pretty clear on that. Ryan, did you have anything you wanted to add to Chris's comments?
No, did a great job. Thank you, Chris.
Um, well, I'll kick off the discussion. You know, this is consistent with what the city did previously. So I am supportive of doing it. I'm pleased that it can be something that's a little bit more efficient for the, for the firm to create, given, given they're, they're already have some experience in the matter and have researched the matter. So I'm, I'm personally in favor of doing it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the actual Eagle site itself. It says, public notice start date, six twelve, twenty twenty-three, public notice end date, seven two twenty-three. So does that mean it has to be in their inbox by the second of July? Is that what that means?
So I, I was actually trying to confirm that in the public notice. I don't know that, when, when I read that language, to me, it indicates the period of time that they're noticing it publicly, but there's no way that they could make a decision within a few days afterwards.
Say that put a real tight timeline on us.
Correct. So I think similar to what we, I mean, I think as we did with the Army Corps, as soon as we got direction from council, it really needs to be done as soon as possible, but we obviously need to also follow council's processes. So we'd want to get it back here in front of council to approve it before it was sent in.
But any other thoughts from council? One other thing this reminds me is just to be consistent, I believe I recused myself or was voted present for the last vote, so I'll probably do the same on Monday, just because of my work for Eagle during the day. So just, I should probably be consistent with that unless you feel otherwise.
Mr. Mayor, I would want to know, we've got to feel, if you're going to recuse, recuse yourself, we have two absences on Monday.
True.
Do we take the vote Monday, or do we?
Well, we presumably still have a quorum, so we would still have three.
I would want to make sure, though, that we've got.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, let's, let's, let's talk, I mean, as a council.
Anyone opposed to this?
I mean, you, you know how I feel, but I probably should not vote on it, given my day job with you.
My vote would be a yes, but I will not be present.
You won't be present, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm supportive.
You're supportive?
I'm supportive as well. I think.
Okay.
I would think we all are supportive of.
I think as long as we can be confident that we're all supportive and that there's going to be three of us now voting, then we need to just.
So wait, let's just, let's just make sure we do the, do the counting correct. That we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be short three council members?
You, how, Miss Councilmember Leo, myself.
Okay. So we can still get it done in time for the deadline?
Even based on this discussion, Mr. Mayor, I think.
Yes, I mean, we'd be comfortable, we'd be comfortable starting the work. I mean, ultimately, what we would need is we would want a quorum. A quorum would be sufficient to take action on it, to approve that we would, that it is the council's position and that we could submit it.
Yeah, okay. All right, if you're comfortable, okay, everybody feel comfortable?
Yeah, we can start work, and then we'll bring it back to you at a later date when we submit it, before we submit it.
Yeah, this, this is more of the same of what we've been, it's, it's consistent with our position that we've already snaked out, so, okay.
And I think too, just for logistics, it was probably, as it was requested by the coastal alliance, we, we did work with the coastal alliance legal council and with representatives previously. I would assume that we would have the authorization to do that. Again, it did streamline the process for us. And it was efficient in gathering background data, so we'll proceed as we did previously.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. We, Mayor, we have a quorum now. Is it, now, can we not vote on this at all tonight?
No, no, no. Well, once again, I mean, like, like my previous comments about, about, you know, adding things that are, into my knowledge of an emergency nature, I, I would prefer that the public have a chance to see, see agendas and see what's on the agendas. Because I think, I think we do disservice to the community when we add things to our agendas at the last minute or take votes when people aren't expecting us to vote. So I'm not in favor of doing that. So with that, I think we'll close that one out. And move on to the next item on our agenda. This is discussion item B, right of encroachment request for two forty-six Culver Street. Looks like we've got this here on page four. I've got you at the, up at the podium, Ryan, you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, City Councilmembers. So there's a new owner at two forty-six Culver, so I think that a lot of folks are excited about that. They already have a new retailer in the building, and so it's kind of, they have some new life on that corner. So the new owner had observed, you know, some prior photos of the, the building and saw that there were some, some flower boxes that, that were up front, and has an interest in bringing back flower boxes. They've applied for historic district permit, you know, I've discussed that with the chair, and it's something that the chair feels is probably appropriate for administrative approval instead of a full board approval. So we're, we're dealing with that permit side of things, but the, the encroachment of the flower boxes into the right of way is something that the city council would have to approve through a revocable license agreement. So that's what's essentially, you know, being brought to you today.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, question. Thanks. Good afternoon, Ryan. I'm a hundred percent supportive of flower boxes and flowers. Absolutely. My question would be, though, is these are probably going to be, I'm assuming it would be removed during the winter time, because I believe we've got a, a bobcat that goes down the sidewalks and removes snow. We want that to be an impediment to that work. And I don't know if the street's actually on that schedule, but something we definitely want to check to have those removed, if that's the case.
Okay, yeah, I'll check with DBW on whether or not that equipment. Yeah, with that it has, and then we can certainly check with the, the, the property owner about whether, what their intent is and removing them and work on something like that. And I'll report back on Monday.
Yeah, we just want to have a public safety issue in the winter time when they're trying to clean the sidewalk, so, thank you.
I know, quick question. Aren't the business owners responsible for clearing snow and ice in front of their buildings?
You do have an ordinance that, that does indicate that, that is correct.
However, they do have the bobcat that does go through that sidewalk, all of the main sidewalks in downtown area, so.
Any other discussion?
It'll look nice. It'll really.
I'm completely in favor of it. I love the fact that it's been bought and it's been spruced up. It's looking great. It was almost getting lightish before, and it's, I think he's doing a great job. And if they want to plant flowers, I say let them plant flowers.
Yeah. It, it, it's a historic building. There's a plaque on it, but, but it does kind of present itself in a stark sort of manner. So I think anything to kind of soften it and add a little bit of color to it is, is a great idea.
I never recall a problem with those being in the way when they were there before. So it's, it's not a different design than what was there.
Personally, I'd be surprised if, but, you know, it's fine to check, but I'd, I'd be surprised if it was, it was a hindrance. But so, yeah, I think we're, are we all pretty good?
Yeah.
All right. So thanks. Yeah, we will hopefully be able to vote on that on Monday. Okay, C sidewalk seating agreement, one twenty-seven Hoffman. This is Uncommon Coffee. Ryan, you've got this one again?
Yeah, so Uncommon Coffee submitted a sidewalk seating application. Last year, you may recall, they actually had expanded outdoor dining in the street, and so they elected not to do the dining in the street this year, but just have the sidewalk cafe, and then they also have interest in additional expanded outdoor dining on their private property, which they've actually submitted a separate special land use application that, that, that's under review and some discussion with the applicant. So at least the, the approval from city council of, of use of the, the public space is, is what you're being asked to consider.
Okay, so Catherine's here.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
I did see you walk in. My apologies.
Did you, did you get a chance to walk around this area and check out, you know, the seating arrangement? Have you walked in this area yourself?
Which, which seating?
The map, with the map provided.
So the, the portion that's on private property is, is under review and not subject to your approval. So the, the portion that's just right along the sidewalk is what you're being asked to review.
Right, yeah, okay, okay.
So the full map that you see in your, as part of their application, I said, that's kind of the, the total area of expanded outdoor dining, but I said, your approval is, is simply giving them permission to use the actual public space that, that's on the north side there.
Right, and you're referring to the portion in the upper left of that document, correct?
Correct.
Best, best spot right there.
Right. And I mean, I, maybe I'm crazy, but I walked by it to check it out this afternoon before a meeting, and it's already there, so.
Yeah.
The sidewalk seating?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, what's driven, what's, what's, what's on that diagram is already in place.
Right.
Unless I'm missing something.
The sidewalk seating, I'm certainly aware of, of being in place similar to these others that we've been trying to bring into compliance. The, the seating on the private property was there a while back. I reached out to the owners to discuss with them the options that they had to apply if they wanted to have that expanded outdoor dining in, you know, on their private property. There's some other pieces that we're working through related to surveys and what's on their property and what's not. So really, what, what's there on the private property shouldn't be there, if it is there.
No, and I, I don't know if that's there. I know on the sidewalk it's there, because I'm there every Thursday morning. But that, like you said, it's like bringing them in compliance with what everybody else, the number of approvals that we've done recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody's is.
Yeah, because that was like scooters where their seating is already there.
Yeah, I agree.
For the, for the sidewalk seating.
Right, yeah.
And that's what city council has granted some discretion related to enforcement related to the, the, the use of the public space.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question, looking at the map now, something caught my attention, the driveway, which I believe is that space, if you can go back to that previous page, clerk, please. Yes, between the Glicks property and the actual uncommon, that's the driveway currently where it's a, just a five-minute cappuccino, sat, whatever they call it. And I'm seeing here that there's a, if I understand this correctly, there's going to be a rope put in with picnic tables and additional seating in the driveway? Is that what I'm seeing?
Dave.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Right. What you're asking, your view today is simply for the revocable license agreement for the actual use of the sidewalk space. This is a fuller map of additional seating that they want to do, and that's subject to separate zoning approvals.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
Great, thank you.
And historic district.
Would it be helpful to have Catherine come up and just?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, would you?
That's okay.
Come up and, would you come up and just maybe
yourself.
Help, yeah, introduce yourself where you, where you live, and yeah, thanks.
I'm Catherine Briers from Uncommon Coffee Roasters. I'm in the position of vice president, and so helping with a lot of this with the owners, so.
Just, just so we're clear, maybe you could just help us with, with that map, what's the same, what's going to be different with what you're proposing?
Yeah, so, um, we didn't realize, you know, there were some changes and, and last year and the year before, and we kind of grandfathered in with our expanded outdoor dining with the new ownership. So we're kind of figuring this all out together, so I appreciate your patience with this. But there had been tables and a bench like on the sidewalk in front of the cafe. That's what we're asking to still continue to use. So we've submitted the application and the fee, and we'd like to just have the bench and a couple of little tables in front of the cafe between the sidewalk and the curb.
Yeah.
So that's what we're asking for. Yeah, right there. And in further consultation with using our driveway and all that, we understand that's a different land use permit. And so we've been talking to surveyors, and I have another, you know, chance to talk to you about that, hopefully. So we're gonna kind of hold on that and reassess, but for now, we're thinking about, you know, may we use that sidewalk for a couple of tables?
Okay.
And then potentially, actually, we might ask to do the street seating again, if that's still an option, to do the two seats in the driveway. So I know that's another application and all that, but yeah, so.
I think, thanks for just kind of, it's always nice to hear it right from the business owner, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that.
We're just trying to find a way to safely accommodate visitors, because we know the cafe is such a popular destination and lots of people milling outside. And, you know, you did see pictures of us with our driveway there. What we were trying to do was eliminate the five-minute latte parking that the gentleman referred to and stop people from coming in our driveway, because we found that that's actually probably not the safest thing. We have deliveries coming in and out, and, and we don't really want people pulling in the driveway and backing out. Strollers are there, you know, people are, it's just too many people. So we were trying to find a way to be safe with our visitors and then maybe let them be in a safe space, waiting for a coffee instead of like in a driveway. So that's where that initial thought was, for using our driveway as a place for visitors to spend some time while they're at the cafe, so. But again, we'll move forward with a, a separate.
So we're talking now.
Go ahead, Gregory.
We're just approving something that's already there, and right, that's there right now, right?
Well, it is, only because we didn't know.
Right, oh, sure, we're just playing touch up right now. Oh, we are too. No, no, yeah.
Forgiveness and, and permission, if that's possible, so.
Right, of course.
I, I think, I, I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but, you know, what you have there is wonderful, and, you know, it's nice for people to be outside. People have, I think, what I've learned is people have kind of become accustomed to spending more time outside post pandemic, so.
Yeah.
Personally, I'm in favor, and I'll just, the rest of the team, I think, I'm happy to hear from the rest of the team on what they think.
I have my question answered. I'm good.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that the council's, so what the clerk is showing you is the application. If you look at the actual revocable license agreement itself, it lists just the tables and chairs that are in this, on the sidewalk. The actual diagram that's in, that's part of the agreement only shows that, that section, so I, this, this, you know, so it's absolutely clear.
Yeah, no, I think, this, this has been helpful. No, we're, we're going to be, I think, I think we're good. Yeah, so we'll, we'll be able to vote on it on Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so that covers C. Now we're at sixty, S T R task force engagement proposal. Ryan, you could take this one as well?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
So the, the short-term rail task force that, that council created is now met five times, so we're, we're moving right along. It seems like it's a fast pace, and it is. I mean, we're meeting every couple of weeks, and Task Force has been working through a lot. But we've had really good, I think, you know, public engagement so far. There's a lot of folks that are attending the task force meeting. There's a lot of folks that are attending the task force meetings, there's a lot of folks that are on the, the Zoom meetings, a lot of folks actually uh, providing public comments at the meetings. Um, and then a lot of folks that, well, you know, a good number of folks that have actually submitted, you know, letters and emails uh, you know, for the task force members to consider. And so, um, you know, similar to your other boards and commissions, I mean, all of our packets are, are on the city website, they're being sent out in the city's e-news blast. Um, then every meeting is available um, live on Zoom and then the recording of the videos on our YouTube page. That way there's, you know, hopefully full transparency here and everybody can see what's going on um, and, and be a part of that process. And so, one of the, the parts of the uh, the resolution that created the task force that the planning commission recommended and the city council uh, adopted was that the task force would gather resident property and business owner feedback in the form of uh, forums and uh, surveys. And so um, uh, McKenna and, and your staff here uh, both think that's a fantastic idea. It's more proactive form of public engagement, um, some folks may not be as comfortable coming to a, a meeting. Um, or standing up at a podium or even maybe writing a letter, but they may be more willing to provide feedback uh, via a, you know, survey. Or they may be willing to come to a, a town hall style meeting that's maybe a little less formal and there's not folks, you know, sitting at a table, you know, looking at them. And we can have a little bit more of an interactive conversation between task force members, staff, consultants and, and interested members, stakeholders. So um, McKenna, uh, you may recall, you, you approved a, an agreement with McKenna um, uh, for kind of a baseline of work. And then there was optional services that, that basically were going to be determined uh, as, as we went along. One of those items was the cost for public engagement, depending on what type of public engagement the task force and council members uh, were willing to consider. So um, bringing to you um, McKenna's proposal to uh, uh, together uh, a survey as well as conduct uh, a town hall meeting. The task force did discuss uh, these items at their last meeting, uh, there seemed to be, you know, strong consensus, consensus to do a survey. Um, there was one member that, that did kind of have some question about whether or not we could maybe do that in-house. From my perspective, I think it's probably best that McKenna, they had the best expertise as far as preparing questions or a third party, you know, there's neutrality there, you know. So there's, I think a lot of benefits to them helping uh, prepare questions, certainly we, we can use our e-news blast to send it out, we'll have it on our website, put it out on our social media channels. So we're certainly going to use those methods, we put that in the paper, we'll have paper copies here uh, at city hall for folks that want to take it that way. So staff will certainly be involved, but uh, I think McKenna's best to probably prepare that survey and then the task force will still have input on the questions. Uh, and then on the task force, um, there were some uh, members that uh, did feel that the town hall would also uh, be beneficial as well. Uh, and then addition, the, the task force is also going to make their uh, their second meeting uh, in July and in August, so a little bit later. So that way there's an opportunity for folks to come uh, a little later in the evening if they, if they're working at the time the task force is in place. So happy to answer any questions and go from there.
Any questions for Ryan?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no questions, just more of a uh, um, and I know that uh, um, the chair of the uh, short term rental task force is here. Holly, thank you for being here today. This is discussed at the planning commission on Thursday in relation to the work that the planning commission is doing to also get the community's feedback on the waterfront moratorium. A lot of discussion around how that engagement might look and working with our planning consultant, David Jerosik on that and some very similar ideas. And what came out of that discussion was, and what I'm always focused on in these, in these events, we need to make sure that we don't ever have a situation where someone comes back to one of us three months after the project is done and presentation is made and they said, no one ever talked to me about this or no one ever made an effort to reach me. So I've got three people on my four block area that are not on the internet, they don't have email. They, and, and I will, for the waterfront moratorium, will personally be going to their house and giving them information to say, I'd like your, because they have opinions. So I think we had a good discussion how we might make sure that the community is engaged and we have a couple of ideas that I don't want to introduce it quite yet. But the planning commission will be having some pretty interesting events where we'll be out in public for people to come up and, and talk with us and, and learn a little bit more about what the community's, or what the planning commission is attempting to do here. So I'm supportive of this, I think the more professional we can make this and, but more importantly, the more public engagement at the people's level. It's in front of the, wherever, is incredibly important.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to um, uh, agree with the McKenna and then uh, Mr. Cummins. Um, I think that transparency, exposure, the idea that a lot of people don't want to, it seems easy to us, but it can be very intimidating to get up there and stand. Something that's a little more um, egalitarian, I think would be, would really be appealing. And I think that having the third party facilitate, it makes a lot of sense um, as well, so I'm in favor of it.
Any other council thoughts on this?
Same, very much in favor of, of, it's the topic of conversation, whether I'm walking around the community or on the golf course, everybody wants to talk about this. So I think as many opportunities as we could give folks to provide their comment to someone other than just one of us.
That's good.
Yes.
Any other thoughts from council? Um, yeah, I, I'm also in favor, so I think, I think using McKenna this way is, is, is very wise. So I'm very supportive of it and um, I think we've got good consensus on this one, so. If no other questions, um, I, I, and Holly, did, did you want to add anything or no, you're good, okay, thank you. So I think we've got that one covered. Um, okay, E, planning commission NZB reappointments, should be an easy one, it's some familiar names uh, before you guys, so uh. The uh, existing members that were up for reelection or up for reappointment, I should say, have thrown their hats back in, which I'm really grateful for. We've got Ann Brokers, Steve Mans have reapplied for reappointment to planning. Uh, we've got James Boak re- reapplying for ZBA and um, I think they've served us well so far. And Ri- and Ryan, I didn't mean to usurp you, do you have any other comments on that?
No, no, no other uh, Thomas Mayor, other than uh, I do want to correct my memo because when I, when I wrote it up, uh, I, I am. I want to speak for Mr., the, the chair of the ZBA, um, I think he's been supportive of uh, Mr. Belk uh, returning. But I have not been able to reach him and confirm that statement, so I do want to place that caveat that I'll make sure and do that before your, your Monday meeting to make sure that that uh, statement is absolutely accurate because it's important that, that you have accurate information. So my apologies that I haven't been able to reach him yet on that, but I do have a call in town, so.
Very good, anything on, on these appointments? Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one question, uh, were there other applicants besides from the reappointments that were submitted? Do we know?
Yeah, so for the ZBA, there was uh, uh, one other um, application and we, uh, the city clerk did notice a uh, uh, an alternate. Position that's on the ZBA, so um, we're still, you know, accepting applications. Certainly we'll consider that, that individual and any others that have applied, uh, my, my assumption, assuming the mayor's willing to bring that person in for an interview.
Certainly.
Um, and consider that person possibly for that position.
Yes. Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to get this done though before these terms expire, so um, if, if, if there is anyone that's really itching, I can make myself available. I mean, if, if there's somebody that really presents themselves, I can make myself available, I suppose Friday or something, you know, to hear them out and hear their, you know, their interests. So just let me know, I'm, I'm out of town tomorrow, but I could be available. I mean, I would like to kind of get this done.
Well, I, I'm, I'm in support, just want to be, be respectful of the policy that we have.
Certainly, certainly, so yeah, if there is anything that's coming and somebody would like to sit down, um, I can make myself available, if, if you can, I don't know what your schedule's like. We've done it together usually. Or just, yeah, let me know.
Yeah, we can touch base and discuss next.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Uh, very good, that's uh, E, so now we are at F signage request, fourth of July. You Ryan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you, this is uh, on page forty one of your agenda packet. Uh, as you know, the city approved the laser music and fireworks show for the fourth of July. Uh, what we left off of the special event application uh, is the request for signage, which is typically done with most special events. So that's the request that's coming in front of you, one for a banner sign and then one for um, the uh, yard signs throughout the city.
Great. Seems pretty straightforward, any, any comments, questions from council for, for the manager?
Well, I, I would like to say, I certainly hope that they're as cool as the poster that you guys have been putting out.
They will be. And or cooler, um, and one additional note before you take your, well, you won't, on Monday you take your vote, but just uh, item of note. Um, the mayor and I will be on Wood TV eight live tomorrow at what time?
Uh, four o'clock, I believe, yes. Four P M, four P M.
To talk about fireworks.
We're going to promote the event.
They're um, Wood TV's talking to a, a number of city mayors about, in West Michigan about either big issues or big events they've got going on. So it should be, last time I was there was talking about drinking water, so this will be, or recycling, so this will be a welcome um, change.
It's tomorrow at four P M.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, so Ryan and I are going to tag team it tomorrow, yeah.
Please, please don't forget to mention Venetian.
I was just going to say that.
Well, okay, well, we, it was going to be, July is off the hook in Saginaw, but we can also add September, so. That's my, my point, I was going to say, July is crazy, fourth of July and.
I see.
But we can, but we can, we can say the whole summer season and.
And don't forget music in the park and.
If you have some bullet points you'd like to give me and Ryan, we can try to get through them in thirty, the thirty seconds we'll have, so yeah, so thank you. Um, okay, are we good on that one? I think we are.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Okay, six G, no parking signs discussion.
Mr. Mayor, happy to take this one.
Page forty two?
Yes, sir, page forty two, so we, we've had some requests for the installation of no parking signs.
Yes.
Um, and these requests have come in for, for various reasons. Uh, the one that I received early on in the year, perhaps even last year, uh, were some safety concerns. Uh, for emergency vehicle clearance, mainly the fire department apparatus, so the fire trucks can get down. I think Allegan Road was a concern and there was a quest, request for no parking signs uh, uh, in that area. Uh, the other concern that we've heard recently um, were issues related to line of sight um, with intersections and crosswalks. Uh, that came from Mr. Swan who, who is, who is present. Um, and then also in addition to that, um, protection of landscape and non-urbanized areas of the city, right? Namely protecting the legacy trees or the, the, the big beautiful trees that we have in the city, which really makes the city um, what it is. And people love the shade, especially in the middle, middle of summer, so we want to keep that around. Um, so the recommendation that's going to come from me um, is that the city address first the safety issues.
Yeah.
Um, with the emergency vehicle clearance, uh, treat that as a top priority. Um, work with the DPW, Department of Public Works, Allegan County Sheriff's Department, um, Fire Department. And city engineer needs to be involved as well.
Yeah.
And then what I'd recommend is that they create a map, or the engineer creates a map and then brings it back to city council for review. Um, and decision making on placement of no parking signage. Um, so I mean, the council and city staff has not identified going through this whole no parking signage request. Um, as a priority or strategic priority for the season. And so the recommendation would be outside of the emergency vehicle concerns, that you add this to your strategic planning session. Uh, when you go into the winter months. Um, and then of course, there's a balance to, to be considered, you never want to pit your business community versus your residents. But um, I, I think most people will realize that if city places more no parking signs up and on the hill, so to speak, um, that will upset certain humans. Um, and so there's also concerns that we receive for sign pollution. Uh, too many signs and then people stop, stop paying attention to signs or it's just kills the aesthetics. So we get those complaints as well. Um, and then, yeah, emergency vehicle access and landscape protection, that should be very, very thoughtfully navigated. So I, I would take your time with that, but I would again focus on the emergency vehicle, no parking signage as a priority. And then address the rest when you have time to think about it and think it through.
Thoughts from council?
Yeah, uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to thank the manager for putting this in front of us, this has been something that has, uh, I've lived this issue my entire life here in town. So it's a constant battle and that balance is a great word because it's always a balance against private property rights, public right of way, safety. I agree, safety is first and foremost in this discussion. Um, and down the road, we can talk about some of the aesthetics and making sure signs are all similar in terms of how they look and all that kind of stuff. But um, you know, it's interesting because one of the things that I'm seeing, especially now that the streets have been painted, which is wonderful, is that people tend to park in yellow areas. And I think that's causing some safety issues too, so. Anyway, it's a constant battle to make sure that we stay consistent and that people follow the rules. So I, I'm looking forward to the conversation about this, I think this will result in some, you know, not everybody's going to be happy, but we're going to come up with something that's going to be good. So.
Any other thoughts from the council? Yeah, I, I, I guess my only thought is, is I sort of am a big fan of when it comes to something like this where there are unintended, potentially unintended consequences, is to try to do it in a holistic manner. Um, you know, we, we have had, for example, you know, a few car accidents that seemed quite significant based on the pictures I saw. And it's always seemed strange to me that there are some uncontrolled intersections right on Butler Street for, as an example. Um, and that's always seemed very strange to me, um, and you know, so. From my perspective, I wouldn't mind seeing some recommendations on parking, but I, you know, and park, no parking signs recommendations. But I would also like to see some recommendations on, on stop signs and, and things we can do to uh, better control traffic and hopefully avoid either a vehicle, vehicle accident or God forbid a vehicle pedestrian accident. Um, yeah, once again, you know, I just, you know, we've got a playground across the street from a bathroom, which is not ideal. Um, you know, vehicles, well, most vehicles aren't getting smaller, they tend to be getting bigger and um, for whatever reasons. And um, I do worry particularly at some of these intersections just right outside our door here, uh, that cars just don't know. Is, is it my turn, is it not my turn, how fast is someone going down Butler Street, how fast should I be going down Butler Street? So my personal view is, is I've, I'm, I'd be very, very interested in more of a holistic analysis that looks at enough, these things together in a, in a holistic manner. But um, I, I certainly wouldn't stand the way of doing this, I, I think this is important and, and I'm, I'm happy with the staff moving forward. Yeah, go ahead, Garnet.
Well, same applies for Water Street, there are several intersections on Water Street where there's, if someone's coming down Water Street, they're not stopping. And someone's coming from the post office and wanting to turn, nobody's stopping, um, same thing, so.
And yeah, the post office, especially that corner right there, even when with the cars parked there, it's really hard to come out and see onto Butler Street. I live on the corner, you know, over there at Hoffman where that accident was. And so many people over the years, and we see it, the shopkeepers and everything, they, they don't know whether they should stop or not. And so there's always kind of like that, you see a lot of back and forth, like, oh, can I go, can I not go? Um, you know, it's, it, it's worth the study and, and I think we uh, we could have some no parking in the downtown area. Especially by the post office uh, uh, around there. Um, there, there are some places where I think that the car should not be parked here, you just can't see onto Butler Street. So then I think, you know, maybe four-way stops, you know, I, I think that would be a great solution.
I, yeah, I personally would be in favor of that, I mean, what, I'm glad you brought up Water Street Garnet because, you know.
Yeah.
Quite often you'll see a large, full-size pickup truck parked diagonally and uh, I think we've all been done in Music in the Park and families, kids, you know. Human nature, you, you don't go to the crosswalk, you know, you pop out between the diagonally parked cars across the street and head back up home. And I, it, it's always a worry for me and I'm probably the worst, one of the worst offenders, you know, yeah, I, I like this kind of small town aesthetic where you just kind of wander around the street and.
Are you saying you're a jaywalker? Do not put that on record, sir.
You know.
I've got legal counsel here and we'll, and we'll talk about that later, we'll talk about that.
Guilty as charged.
We will talk about that a lot later, um, but Helen, I think you had a comment, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to add on that part of the, wasn't, it's not really necessarily a parking situation, but to your point about a holistic approach, one of the things that we're looking at very seriously with PPW are things like a flashing crosswalk at the playground, you know, there should be something a little bit more, I think that we've kind of, we're trending toward um, leaving the issue about uh, having the, the playground mood because we're getting so much pushback, so, but the very least we should have a flashing crosswalk, three-way stops that, don't forget about us on the other side of the river, right? Carriman should have a three-way stop, Campbell should have a three-way stop. So a holistic approach to the safety with parking and stop signs is, I think is certainly in order, I would be fully supportive.
Another, another great street to bring up, Park Street.
And I might uh, like to suggest maybe um, a couple, maybe one on each block or just a spot near a corner to be no parking but loading only zone, because we have merchants like uh, wine sellers, um, uh, the uh, I can count at least one on each street for sure, that I always see their cars parked in a yellow spot because they're unloading and they're unloading cases of very heavy things. They have nowhere else to.
Or stopping in the middle of the street.
So it would be nice to see when we look at this, to think about adding just a few no parking loading only zones.
Well, that would also be responsive to your concerns about the post office, given the traffic the post office gets from people checking their P O boxes, so that's.
Right.
Um, so I think it sounds like, it sounds like there's consensus for you guys to move forward on this piece of it, there's a lot of pieces to it, but I think, you know, once again, maybe we talk in more detail at our strategy session. Um, I think, I think I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of uh, interest around traffic calming.
Yeah.
You know, on, on some of these busier streets like Butler, like Water, like Park, things that we can do to calm traffic and to make the pedestrians and the cyclists safer, so.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, and then just so we don't scare the businesses that are downtown, as we're talking about adding additional no parking zones, right? Because we know parking. Adding additional no parking zones, right? Cause we, no parking's been a sensitive issue for decades or eons. Is that the conversation. Should also include opportunities to add additional parking. And some ideas like the Peterson Preserve area actually presents itself as a really, really good opportunity. The area is flat, uh, and as far as walk, walkability, it's very close. Uh, so just another item to, to consider as we move forward with a comprehensive study in the winter.
Yeah, like, once again, I think the need for a kind of a holistic approach, if we're taking something away, where's, where's the opportunity to add? So. Good. I think this was a good discussion, actually.
Yeah, I appreciate you adding this to that, to our agenda. I think it's a great thing.
You're welcome. It's very good. Uh, so that takes us to six H, special event, Mount Bald Head Challenge.
I'm happy to speak to it.
Go for it.
Um, yes, so we are presenting the twenty-second annual Mount Bald Head Challenge. We missed, wouldn't twenty-third, but we missed uh, during COVID. And um, Rotary Club, again, has taken the initiative and presenting, or and um. Uh, offering the Mount Bald Head Challenge. The. It's gonna be a little bit different this year and that we're proposing that we start at Oval Beach. We did start at Oval Beach once in twenty-twenty-one and then at Coflin Park. Coflin Park was selected this time. Um, one of the main uh, concerns that we have is again the safety and running and the limit, uh, running through town. Oh, I'm sorry, in the past it ended at Wick's Park. And so uh, we're gonna uh, ask that we be able to end at Coflin Park this time, but other than that, the, the, in the race route. Hopefully this will be the, we can nail this down. Um, one, one of the big things that I've been working on, uh, and participating with Mount Bald Head Race is like, let's get the ten K, let's get the half marathon. And then stop playing with it. So I think that we've got that in here and I will bring a narrative with the, with the actual routes. This is the maps that you see here for the ten K and the half marathon. But we will have a actual narrative for the routes and, and some better maps, but. So yes, nothing too exciting. Um, same Saturday after Labor Day and same event.
Great. Um, just one thing to flag for Jamie, the um, event breakdown, it says the date's on the first, which I believe should be the.
Oh, yes, I saw on your note, it said that.
Yeah, the, the, just the breakdown.
And then you've also got.
It's, it's the ninth. I checked the calendar.
It's the ninth and also you've got September ninth, twenty thousand and three at the description. It's twenty, twenty-three.
Oh, yeah.
The motion's correct.
The motion's correct.
Narrative is a little bit, thank you. Yeah, I did see that too.
Anything else on Mount Bald Head? It's making my knee hurt already. All right, we're good? All right, awesome. That takes us through H. Uh, this is, this, here comes a meaty one, six I, water asset management plan and rate study. Ryan, you're gonna kick this one?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is on page fifty-one of your agenda packet. I'll share this discussion with Chris Patterson here. Uh, believe it or not, this is probably, in my opinion, the most important agenda item that you have uh, for this year is to complete the study. State of Michigan is not playing around. Uh, they want a, an asset management plan and they want it soon. Um, and so what we're recommending to you is to hire a firm, Baker Tilly, who does both rate studies, infrastructure studies. Um, in order to be in compliance with Eagle. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Patterson.
Just a couple of things here. Um, we've been working with the city manager related to some. Uh, sort of the management with Cal Lake and the process of working with that, um, as the memo points out, there was a notice from Eagle. One of the things that we do have to complete is the mass asset management plan. There's two component pieces of it. One is an engineering side, which um, John Moxie will be able to do from F and V, which is why you don't have a proposal for him. He's already aware of what's happening. Um, you are one of obviously two other incorporated entities, uh, being the City of Douglas and Sagatuck Township. They're going through this exact same process. So. I mean, the one thing I would point out, obviously you do have purchasing policies, um, that allows the city manager to kind of take the lead on this. Competitive bidding doesn't control really for two reasons. One. We are hiring someone for professional services, even though the contract is close to exceeding ten thousand. The other part that's important though is that um, Andy Campbell, Baker Tilly, has actually already been contracted by the City of Douglas and by Sagatuck Township. To do this exact same piece of work. So the asset management plan that we're sharing in was a draft that was uh, completed as we understand it partially by Cal Lake. Through a, what I think is appropriate title, the Saw Grant. So that original plan though, was from the entire authority system. As it was passed down to the local entities to comply with your requirements, it just didn't have sufficient detail, for instance, for us, the city itself. So. We kind of need this additional piece for Mr. Campbell to pick up for the city. Um, he's already doing this work for City of Douglas. And then of course. You, you have another exception that's in your code related to the urgency of this and, and as the city manager has correctly noted, there is urgency here. Um, this is supposed to have already been completed. Eagle is appropriately telling the three units that, you know, you need to get this done as soon as you can. So we do think that Mr. Campbell is. Ready to do the work. He was part of an original piece of a project with the authority about four or five years ago. And so we are uh, recommending the proposal that he's provided, provided with the qualifications presented.
Happy to answer any questions.
One additional note, one, once the rate study is complete, uh, then that puts the city in a very good position to have Cal Lake sewer and water. Put a fee on their bill to start collecting money to replace our infrastructure, which does not currently happen.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I want to reiterate, like, wholly support Ryan's assessment that this is the most important thing. I think I said so publicly in our last meeting. Um, got a lot of things going on right now. This is a compliance issues. There's nothing really more important than our drinking water. Um, and uh, in transparency, again, people need to know what the water bills are gonna be, how they're gonna pay it. Is it an increased rate? Is it gonna be a monthly charge? What's gonna happen? I mean, we're on the hook for essentially fifteen thousand dollars, I think, per parcel. So let's get it figured out. Let's get it done quickly. If we're using the same company that Douglas and the township are in and they're fully, they look very qualified to me. I don't see any reason to stall this at, at all.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, and this is, I commend the three managers because they've been trying to push this along for well over a year now. Um, and it is, we are, we have to do this. We really don't have a choice. Um, so I commend you all. I know you've been trying to be patient and diligent, um, but really now it's just.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I'm also in favor and I agree with everything that's been said around the table and, and I'm pleased that this proposal comes from a firm that has done our neighbors. And, and looked at our neighbors so that this should provide some consistency and some, and some confidence around the, the work product. So. Uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in favor. Anyone else care to share?
Um, I'm in favor of this as well. It's a, there's actually not, I don't see how you can vote no against this because it's, it's, it's just got everything that we need to do. Um, however, when we start talking about adding fees to people's bills, um, it's unavoidable in this situation. It appears to be the amount is yet to be decided, but I think we need to be very. Careful in making sure we keep people in the loop in terms of what we're discussing. Uh, this should not be something that should come as a surprise to anybody. So again, like with our engagements for other projects, it's important, just make sure this information gets out there in a way that everybody hears it. So I'm curious what my bill's gonna look like, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're probably all curious, so, but.
Buckle up.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, you do have engineer John Moxie on the, on the call, and you.
Yeah, sorry, John, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, maybe I'll just add, just to put council's mind at ease in terms of the, the due diligence that's been going on, both from we and staff. We've been pursuing uh, grant opportunities to do this work since before the, the Eagle. Uh, corrective action plan uh, came through and, and the corrective action plan, uh, it's noted in the memo, but the, it wasn't really shown as a deadline. The, the language says Cal Lake will encourage the constituent municipalities uh, to prepare their. Asset management plans within nine to twelve months. It wasn't really listed as a hard deadline. We've been treating it that way. It's obviously become a hard deadline. So I, I applaud you in your uh. Uh, it sounds like the consensus to move forward. We've, we've worked with Baker Tilly on a number of these. We, we have a good working relationship with them, so we're looking forward to it.
Right. Anything else? I think we're good. I think we're ready to move forward on that one. So we will take care of that on Monday. Okay, we are now at six, the uh, additions to our agenda. We are at six J, uh, legal counsel cost manager, if I may, Mr. Manager.
I moved to table this discussion item to the next workshop meeting on July the fifth. And we've been talking about transparency for the last hour and this did not appear on the agenda. And if we want constituents to weigh in on this, it needs to be on the agenda so everyone can see it. I moved to table this until the next workshop.
I have a motion from Louis. Do I have a second?
I would second that, even though I voted. I am open to hearing what anyone has to say. I am, I guess confused by the fact that we've got and I, and I line item here for additions and deletions to the agenda change that looks to me like it can be done on the fly and. I will respectfully listen to anything that any council member wants to bring. I do want that to be brought in a transparent way and if we don't have the ability to have somebody here that we might want to chime in on it. Then I don't believe that it has been done that way, but I don't think we should necessarily be making agenda changes on the fly if we're not gonna comply with that.
All right, so, so we have a motion on the floor to table, but we have a motion to table. We, we have a second, we have, we have Louis, second, but go ahead, Gregory, discussion.
I just want to say, well, this agenda was just mailed out late yesterday afternoon, so I hadn't been out that long and this is a workshop, so. I mean, I don't have any problem with anybody ever adding anything to an agenda during a workshop. Um, uh, I don't think that's too far ahead for the public to, uh, to know.
I, I have, I would say I have liked the way we've been working together where, you know, we try not to create a lot of surprises for the public. Where people know what we're gonna be talking about, when we're gonna be talking about it. We try to do a good job of that. And I, you're right, this is not something that we would vote on. We're not taking action. Um, but last minute agenda changes on non-emergency type issues. Um, that type of behavior's been in the headlines lately in West Michigan and frankly, it's quite unseemly for, for a council like this and I really, I, I. Do not like surprising people uh, with things like this and I think it's a bad look for the city. But with that, um, go ahead, Russ.
I take full responsibility for proposing that these be added to the agenda. Simply as opportunities to open a discussion. I am not expecting a detailed. Meeting today regarding these two topics. It's an introduction of the topic. And trying to get more of a sense of how council might feel about moving ahead with. Studying our ethics policy.
We're not, we're not on that item.
So on the, on the legal fees.
We're actually, the motion is to table. That's what's, that's what.
The city does not have a written policy for legal representation at council committee meetings and my suggestion is we talk about. That as a topic for council and workshops seem to me to be an appropriate place to.
And respectfully, I would say, um, like I said already, I'm very. Open to hearing anything that I want, everyone here has been elected and I want to hear everything that you have to say. I think it would give us more time if we were able to prepare and to your, to your item that it's not an emergency item and if we have time to repair and it's just prepare, it's just to push to the next council. Workshop, I think that that makes a lot of sense.
More than happy to go to the next workshop with it.
Perfect.
Okay, so I, I think it's, I, it sounds like we've, we've got some consensus here and, and also. You know, we have the disadvantage of the mayor pro tem and another council member not here and, and quite often, you know, I think this is, this is a worthwhile discussion to have. I, I have my views. On it and others have their views on it and it's something that people in the public have raised. I've seen, I've seen the letters to the editor. But I, I think we have reached consensus based on just having this good discussion. That, you know, we can put this out as a workshop agenda, so everyone's prepared to have the discussion and we, and we have a full, full complement of the council. Is, you made the motion, Russ, you, you made the motion, but I, I'm just, I, I want to just hear from the person that brought it, if I could.
And I would just ask that we make that part of the motion that it will be on the next workshop agenda. amend the motion.
I can support, I can support making it a workshop. I, I'm, and, and because, yeah, this is not intended to kick the can down the road and delay something. I'm, I'm actually looking forward to the discussion, uh, to be honest.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind you that the manager and the mayor are the individuals who set the agenda for workshop and. For the general meeting. And I know it's difficult sometimes because folks have certain issues they want to talk about, but it's always been purview of the manager and the mayor.
And uh, uh, council member Lewis, and all due respect, the council owns the agenda. Yes, it is presented by the manager and the mayor. But ultimately the council owns the agenda. We have every right under our city council charter. City charter, excuse me, and our city rules to add agenda items where we think appropriate and it stands or it falls per vote. That simple.
All right, well, fair points, both of you, fair points. Um, what, I would like to ask you and, and you don't have to agree. Would you mind sending me and, and the manager a request to put it on the workshop?
Absolutely.
And I will give you my word that, that we will make it a matter of priority. And frankly, it'll be the same as the ethics uh, question.
Yeah, absolutely.
But first, so, do we have a motion?
You got a motion, you got a second, you got a discussion.
To table.
Motion is to move to table, to the next meeting.
Okay, all in favor, oh. Just, just a table. I, I, what, what I'm trying to do and I, and I, I agree with what both of you are saying. What I'm trying to do though is to kind of feed this back into a process that I think we've all been working well with together. To feed it back into that process is all I ask, because I don't really want us to take on that look of, of some other communities that have been in the news lately, if, if you get where I'm coming from. So, all right. Voice vote, okay. So all in favor of tabling?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, that takes us to the next item on our agenda, uh, which is uh, six uh, E F J K, K. Uh, which was the ethics policy.
Manager, Mr. Stane, move to table this discussion so it can be included on a workshop agenda. July the fifth, so that the community has the ability to be aware of what we're discussing.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have motion Louis, we have a second Garner, thank you Russ for that. And once again, you know, I, I'm, if, if we can follow the process that I think we've all agreed to and I think it's been working. Um, you know, we will endeavor to do that and, and the one caveat of this one is this, I do believe requires uh, some. Third-party expertise, uh, let me finish please. Um, which would be namely the M M L, because we're not unique among, among municipalities on this issue. And, and also to have, to have legal counsel there because they have some experience, I think, in, in model policies as well. So that would be my only caveat.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. And. The idea here is to present this as an opportunity for council to say, yes, we agree that we should have a study committee created that will then include M M L resources, potentially the city attorney at some point. It's just an opportunity to start the process, to start the discussion, doesn't necessarily need to be hashed out at that particular meeting. I'm just saying, is council interested in moving forward?
Yeah, once again, just trying to get it back into the process and we, we can go over that once we hit it, hit it at a workshop level. So if, any further discussion on the motion on the floor to table, all right?
I would say it's worthy of discussion, reviewing our code of ethics. I think our constituents would respect that we're doing that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. Um, okay, so we have a motion to table, all in favor, please say yes. Yes, any opposed? None, so motion carries unanimously. All right, that covers our discussion. Sorry.
Motion carries five zero.
Five zero, you're very, yeah, not unanimously, correct, thank you. Both motions. Yes. Thank you, Jake. So that completes, completes discussion items. We are now at public comment. This is an open forum, public comments on anything, uh, three minutes only. Please approach name and, and residence.
Hi, I'm Holly Anderson, five, six, seven, Wyrick. I just want to thank you all for your support of the Coastal Alliance comment. That's great, much appreciated. Also, thank you for your support of the short-term rental engagement recommendations. That's also great. A totally random thank you. Everyone who is involved in getting the Verizon cell towers fixed. Thank you. I have cell service on weekends, so I'm thrilled. Um, so that's it.
Great. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to uh, offer public comment? Uh, seeing no takers, I will open the floor up to the folks on the Zoom. Would anybody like to offer public comment on the Zoom? If so, please uh. Uh, raise your hand or unmute yourself, start talking, anything. Uh, do you see anything? I don't see anything, Jamie. All right, with that. That will close public comments. Uh, we've got some correspondence from Mr. Fox. Thank you, sir. Uh, and now we are at council comments. Uh, why don't we start with?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Um, did you know that the post office library or the post office lobby is open twenty-four hours now?
No.
Very good. It wasn't, it wasn't advertised and they really don't want to advertise it, but.
But here we are. But now you are.
But I think all of our residents should know, you don't have to run and get your mail at twelve noon on Saturday anymore. So uh, the doors are open. It was per a, I. Believe it was per a law to have access to your boxes twenty-four hours, so they are complying. And uh, and so, yeah.
No, good news, thanks. Um, Russ?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Again, I just want to emphasize that my efforts for those two items on the agenda, I thank council for the support was simply to get a conversation started. So thank you. Uh, two is that I was out this morning walking near my house and I met with a neighbor and we both noticed and I've noticed this for about the past three to four days. This happens. Regularly during the summertime is a boat trailer will be dropped. In a parking spot detached from the truck, whoever brought it and it's gone and it's, this, this particular trailer's been sitting on Francis Street, right off the corner of water for at least. Four days now, out of state plate, not that that matters. Taking up an entire parking spot. Who knows when the person's gonna come back? They may be on a three-week northern trip. I believe the city has an ordinance regarding that and the trailers have normally been brought up to the school parking lot has been the past experience. I know that's kind of. Up in the air right now, but I would certainly like to see that our, our city enforcement be on those, it, it's, it's taking up valuable parking spaces and. And not that I want that voter to not come here, but just to be respectful. Also too is uh, the street painting is wonderful. Great project, I think a wonderful investment of the city's funds. Something that does come up is that there's a number of lines that are not gonna be painted because of the expanded outdoor dining and. I know this year was kind of a, a last minute thing. It got in after the expanded outdoor dinings were put in, but I understand as part of the vocal beliefs is that. When streets get painted or repaired, the owners can be asked to move their. I think expanded outdoor dining for a period of time while that's done and to replace it. Now that's big inconvenience and I think next year. Probably will be in front of that, but that's just something to note that it does impact some of the city services. Uh, three is also just want to get a sense of where we're on the audit schedule. I know the fiscal year's coming up here shortly. Yeah, I just be curious, I know last year, uh, we got the report, which is. Yeah, I just be curious. I know last year we got the report, which is good, but after all the work had been done. So I think there was some interest from some council members about having some more involvement in the, in the desk work of an audit. So just want to get a sense of what that schedule is like. Thank you.
I'd just like to say it's nice to see town busting at the seams and really appreciate the work of the C B B. I know you all are really getting the word out and it's, it's nice to see the guests that are coming in are recognizing it, so. Yeah, it's very nice.
Thank you. I would just want to just flag that I, I believe we are going to have a budget to vote on Monday. So just, you know, you know, if, if anyone has any last minute thoughts for the manager or for Peter. I would just ask you to please try to do that if, if there's anything sticking to you, because you know, we are under a deadline to get it done by the end of this month, so. So I just would just flag that and please reach out to the manager or the treasurer together and.
With be both your public hearing and then budget discussion.
Okay, so just want to make sure that's on the critical path. So with that though, I would echo what, what Councilmember Louis said. It is great to see summer finally arrive. And with that, I think I'm going to try to go out and enjoy it. So could I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Then I'll second that.
Motion gardener, second muncie, all in favor, please say yes. Yes, meeting is adjourned.